We call the June 10th regular meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order. Welcome to all of you here with us tonight. We have a lot of recognitions to have tonight, which is always a wonderful, wonderful thing. It's nice to see so many student faces and parent faces in the audience with us tonight, and to each of you a very warm welcome. If you would now, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom of liberty and to the Constitution, on the nation under God, in the physical, the political, and the justice for all.
And now the Kids at Hope pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children in need. I believe that all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to remind you that if any of you wish to be an unscheduled speaker tonight, there are forms available at the back of the room, and if you would just fill it out and have it up to Ms. Harrison prior to the beginning of the business portion of our meeting. Madam Superintendent, it's time for our special orders.
Yes ma'am, it is. So if you'll assist me in moving to the floor, our first item of business will be the Loves Travel Stops donation to the school district. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Yost, and our audience here and on TV. We have the opportunity tonight to recognize a new business partner that we have with us. So if I could have Eric Wolf of Loves Travel Stops come up, and Carissa Zurgah from the Education Foundation. Loves Travel Stop is a family-based company founded on family organization values out of Oklahoma. Loves Travel Stop is committed to the community. Anytime they open a new travel stop, they make a donation, monetary donation, to an agency in the community. And so Loves Travel Stop just opened up a new location off the Orange Avenue exit. If you haven't been by, they have great prices on gas. But by the way, when they opened up this location here, they said, well, we need to make a donation to a worthy organization in the community, and so they chose the school district. And they're actually going to make their donation of $2,000 to the Education Foundation, because that donation qualifies for a matching grant. So their $2,000 donation actually becomes $4,000. Now, we've already received the check, so they're not presenting the check to us tonight, but we wanted to recognize Mr. Wolf and Loves Travel Stop for their donation to the Education Foundation. So Carissa's here, and Eric's here, and we're really just going to do a photo op, because Eric has declined to make any comments.[205.43][205.43](Laughter) But our comment is, we thank them for their donation. So thank you very much.
We greatly appreciate that donation, especially when it is a matching grant opportunity. Under Project Citizen 2014, we have some state finalists to present this afternoon. I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Yost. It is always a privilege to honor academic excellence, and we have a wonderful privilege this evening of recognizing three of our school-based teams that traveled to the state capital via Skype and participated in a program whereby seventh-grade students identify a perceived concern in their community. They research primary resources, secondary resources, to problem-solve and provide a solution. And St. Lucie West K-8's seventh-grade Project Citizen team, which was led by Mrs. Stephanie Isaacs, won third place in this year's state Project Citizen showcase. Their project was entitled Water Pollution Solution. Our two other teams that participated were Westgate K-8. They had Residential Rehabilitation Center, and Palm Point with Puppy Mills Bite. So at this time, I would like to recognize members of those teams for what they accomplished, and also say thank you to our partner in education, HMH, for providing some of the shirts that provided them some unity as they were presenting. At this time, we have a representative from St. Lucie West K-8, and Mrs. Stephanie Isaacs was the teacher who led this team to state competition. And if she could please come forward, we would like to recognize her with a plaque which reads Certificate of Recognition to Stephanie Isaacs for the 2014 Project Citizen State Finals Third Place. And members of her team who could not be with us this evening, Razim Chatham, Erin Guthrie, Angel Liel, David Medias, Kayla Perez, and Logan Rich. I personally observed them work as a very strong and united team together. You were a great lead on that. Thank you so much. We do have, from Westgate K-8, a team here this evening, and if at this time I could please ask their teacher to come forward, Ms. Boria. And I know her team is very excited about joining her up here. So Ms. Emily Barkheimer. William, or excuse me, Winston Bass. Molly Goyet. Courtney Mason. Lauren Pedraza. And Celeste Rodriguez. Rounding out Westgate's team, Isabella Castillo and Faith Monte were unable to be here with us this evening. I would like to recognize verbally Palm Point's team. Teacher Hillary Cruz led that team. And Alisa Albert, Sarah Fragga-Albujja, Mia Kirchner, Julia Paycheck, Morgan Linker, Christopher Skubish, William True, and Christina Wagner rounded out that team. Wonderful, wonderful effort, making sure that you are problem solvers in this wonderful democratic society in which we live. Parents that are here tonight, could you please stand? I think this is a wonderful photo op.
I know that Mrs. Patrick is just going to remain close to the podium, because our next item is our state history fair participants as well as winners.
Yes, indeed. And summer months are upon us. We had approximately 45 students participating at the state level with history fair. We do have some of our students here this evening, and we appreciate the fact that they have actually received their awards at the state competition. But in recognition for the tremendous efforts that they put forth in this year's state science, state history fair, we would like to invite them to come forward and have a photo op as well. When I call your names, students, could you please come to the front, and I will also mention the school that you represent. Representing Fort Pierce Central High School, we have Dallas Adams and Antravius Solin. Representing Fort Pierce Westwood, Nicole Delano. Here, for the Greyhounds of Lincoln Park, we have Chloe Dill, Lance Barrett, and Callie Zing. Our Palm Point Rockets are represented by Amy Casey. Channing Gofio. Erica Goldberg. St. Lucie West K-8, we have Sebastian Suarez. And anytime our students are involved in competition, research, there's always a wonderful educator and parents supporting them. We do have, representing Palm Point, Ms. Patricia Wright, who is an educator who supported this effort. If you would please come forward. And parents who are in the audience, we do appreciate everything you've done to help and encourage your children. If you could please stand and be recognized. And before we do that, I need to apologize. Lance Fleschner from Lincoln Park Academy. And Alapata Flats, DeMarcus Brooks. Blake Summerlin from Fort Pierce Central. Now would be a great time for a photo op.
This is a night to recognize our students. Next item will be the state, oops, Social Studies, I believe is next, Social Studies Teacher of the Year.
So this evening, we have recognized students, and it's my pleasure to also recognize some of our wonderful educators. Please join me in congratulating our 2014 Social Studies Teachers of the Year. Nominating applications were reviewed by an impartial selection committee in late May, and they were submitted to the Florida Council of Social Studies in June. Our district's three honorees will be recognized later at the Florida Social Studies Conference in Orlando. When I call the elementary, middle, and high school winners' names, I welcome their administrative team to join, because as with everything, there's always a team behind great efforts. Representing elementary, from Palm Point K-8, Ms. Melanie Larson. And representing middle school, Ms. Belkus Madeira from Oak Hammock K-8. And representing high school, I invite Ms. Jean Emerson from Treasure Coast High School to please join us.
An evening of celebration. And one more item, our special thanks and recognition, our star award, Mrs. Michelle Digger.
Good evening. There are so many people in St. Lucie County public schools that do great things every day for either our students, our teachers, staff, or community. Many do not seek to be recognized, and sometimes they're even embarrassed by the fact that people see what they do as special. Tonight, we would like to recognize several individuals that make our daily work more convenient. Let me set up a scenario for you. You walk into work, whether it's at a school or at the district office. You get in, you speak to everyone, you get to your desk, you turn on your computer. Your computer boots up, and everything you expect for that device to do works. All of the software, all of the data that you need, it's there, just as you expected it to be. Now, we know that there are many people and many components that make our systems work. But for tonight, we recognize Carmen Kisman, Pedro Baldaros, and James Dunn from ITS, because last weekend, on a Sunday, these individuals went above and beyond what their duties were required. They worked all day to ensure that our daily routines and expectations were met. Having worked with each of them in the past, I know that they probably feel like this was their reasonable service. And they probably feel like, you know what, this is what I'm supposed to do. But tonight, Carmen, Pedro, and Jim, we give you special thanks and recognition for all the tireless weekends that you have put in in resolving problems and ensuring that students, parents, teachers, and staff can accomplish their daily work. And because of you, and all you do in the background, we just want to say thank you. I know tonight that Pedro, Pedro Baldaros, and Jim Dunn were unable to make it, but Carmen Kisman is here, and I would ask for her to come up.
And before we call this section to a close, I'd like to read a comment from Pedro, who was just recognized. He indicates, "In this fast-paced world, we sometimes forget to slow down and take time to say thank you. I appreciate you, the superintendent and the board's efforts, in taking time for this recognition. It saddens me that I will not be able to receive this certificate in person, but I am truly grateful." I leave you with a quote, "A little boy in our district on his take of his education and a source of my commitment. I have nothing yet I want to give it all. Sincerely, Pedro Baldaros." So we thank him for sending a note in his absence.
Now we will move to our CTA report. I see Ms. Rodriguez is with us tonight. Welcome to the podium, and welcome to summer.
Hallelujah and amen to that. Good evening, and I am happy to say that it is officially summer vacation. Our teachers and our non-instructional staff are taking just a very brief moment to relax before they get into whatever trainings and thinking about their classrooms and next year, because that's kind of how we do it. This last four weeks of every school year, really, is usually very difficult in our office for a lot of reasons. And this year was more difficult than others. In a district where teachers are not a dime a dozen, we should not be non-reappointing teachers whose instructional practice score, that's the observation portion, where that's actually what someone observes in the classroom, are effective or highly effective. Those are people who have threes or better. When those people get non-reappointed and they call our office and they say, but I don't understand, I've been with the district three, four, five years, and I was just non-reappointed, and I have an instructional practice score of 3.67, and what my principal told me was, you're just not a good fit for the school. If we make the argument that our administrators who rated the person and actually observed the person are well-trained in using the observation instrument, then it really makes no cognitive sense to be non-reappointing people who are effective in the classroom. We've got to get to a point with principals that they understand and see the overall big picture, and value an effective teacher, maybe not for their school, but maybe in helping that person be somewhere else in our school district. The answer really isn't to fire them, because that's what non-reappointment is. We can call it all different kinds of things, but it's basically firing them. I'm really personally disappointed in some situations that I'm aware of, where outstanding teachers, especially those in science and math, and some at some struggling elementary schools, were non-reappointed because of what we perceive to be a principal's whim, liking or not liking. Why aren't we trying, why aren't we trying harder to make it easier for people to stay versus looking for reasons to get rid of them? Teachers have the job of teaching, and so do principals, really. We no longer in education have the luxury of advertising a position and having 100 applicants. It just doesn't happen. And frankly, most parents would prefer a certified, qualified teacher in their child's classroom come August. I know, as a parent, I certainly do, and if there isn't one in my child's classroom, you can bet that I'm going to be calling all of you. And a temporary or a permanent sub is not acceptable, and this district had way too many of those for the entire school year last year. Non-reappointing someone is like throwing them away, especially if we've invested years, literally years, into someone, and that's happening more and more, especially as we have only annual people coming in. So all these people maybe have three, four, or five years of experience now. Because once you non-reappoint them, a good many of them are not going to come back. It's too humiliating to have been non-reappointed, especially if you believe you've done a good job, especially if the paper that you get at the end of the year says, you're an effective teacher. Those folks are going to go elsewhere. We can't afford to lose those people. If, as a principal and as a district, we haven't done everything we can to help support people and help make it easier for them to get their certification, and help make it easier for them to get the training that they need, and help them figure out where their niche is in this district, then really the fit isn't that person's problem, it's the person who's making the decision, because that's not the way we should be doing it in this district. We must do a better job of retaining teachers. We do a great job of recruiting them. They come. It's the retaining part that we have a problem with. And part of that retention has to be looking at folks that are effective and saying, you may not fit in this environment, but you know what, my colleague over here has a school that maybe you might be a better fit for, and making that effort to have that communication so that we're not non-reappointing people and saying to them, you're fired, but you can apply for other positions in the district. Because that in and of itself is a humiliating experience for people. And they're not, some of them are not willing to do it, and they're good people, especially the really good ones. So I just wanted to leave you with that. That's what we've been dealing with. Hopefully, as we move forward, we will be dealing with the retention issue that we have in the district. It's one that we are creating. It's not one that can't be solved, but I hope that we can be a part of the solution, because there are solutions to this problem.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Is there anyone here to speak for CWA tonight, Martha? No report? Okay. We then will move to our consent agenda. Board members, we have the agenda before us. I'm glad I entertained a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this point, board members, are there any conflicts that need to be declared before we vote on the issues before us? Seeing, hearing none, we will move then to the recommendation from the superintendent.
Recommend the board approve a total of 24 consent agenda items, beginning with 7.1 and ending with 18.4 as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Are there any items that you wish to pull for discussion? And any items for comment? Hearing none. We have the recommendation for approval from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And at this time, Madam Superintendent, we will move to other business, our stipulated findings, please.
I recommend the board approve the stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders 403 through 414 as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And now, Madam Superintendent, it's time for your report.
Yes ma'am, thank you. It's always delightful to see so many special orders of business, and our students and staff are certainly deserving of the recognition presented this evening. Another area of recognition focuses on health. As quoted-
Performance base, 6.63%. And then looking over at, oops, I've missed Westgate. I do apologize. Westgate K-8, a 4.61% increase. In mathematics proficiency, we want to celebrate Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts with a 5.03% increase. At Floresta Elementary in math, 7.32% increase. Lawnwood, you remember that I mentioned them for an increase in reading, but also in math, 9.20 percentage points. Mosaic, congratulations, with 11.88% increase in their mathematics proficiency. And so we will continue to dig deep into our data and bring you results to celebrate. It will also enable us to focus upon our strategies of best practice, instructional quality, to bring about positive changes in our scores for the future. And as you know, basically, the FCAT 2.0 is sunsetting, except in the area of science, where it will continue for another year, and we will focus on our next-generation sunshine state standards in science. So that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Harrell, a report? No report. And we will move to school board member reports, and Mr. Ingersoll will begin with you this evening.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to thank all the high schools for an awesome graduation weekend, very detailed and planned out, and I think everyone had an awesome experience. And just, Ms. Yost, I was thinking about this the other day. Can we get the last year's agenda for principals' meetings that you've been having with the principals? And then also, when they have up-and-coming principal meetings, can you also email the board members, just like we do with some other meetings that we get, just so that the board members are watching and seeing what's going on? I appreciate it.
So that would be principals' meetings, assistant principal agendas as well? Or just principals?
I'd like to see both of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Hensley?
No report, just a comment. I think I broke 125 graduations, or 127 graduations this summer so far. So I think that every year, I'm so proud of our students, some of the adults, not so much, you know, some of the parents get a little crazy, but our staff and our students are fabulous. And the fact that we are able to do what we are able to do, and when it's hot, or whether it's raining or whatever, and it is a wonderful series of events. I'm so proud of our district to be able to provide, actually even cover, for our graduates. But the behavior of our students and our faculty and staff is exemplary.
I'm looking forward to report St. Lucy High's Cinderella, I think it's the 18th through the 22nd, not positive, check the dates. I need to say something. This year, I have probably never received as many calls and emails from disgruntled teachers, non-reappointment. I have grave concern. These are people that scored very well. As you know, we have nothing to do with the hiring as school board members. It's going to fall on us. We're the ones that go out there every four years and put our souls on the line to run for reelection. But it is a grave concern to me. These are talented people, and since I don't directly have the ability to hire, but I knew when Senate Bill 736 came down the pike and we were doing pay-for-performance, that we were headed for trouble. And I was out there picketing against it, I felt that strongly. But I do have concern. I do have concern about retention. I have a grave concern. At no time in 14 years have I ever received the calls and the emails and people crying on my shoulder that are good, talented people. I don't know how to fix it, but it needs to be fixed. And I, as one board member, am very unhappy, and I am personally going to do some investigation into some of the things that I have heard and seen, because I am the person that's responsible for this ultimately, and I take this very seriously. So I think it's something we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Dr. Mills?
I certainly agree with you, Ms. Hilson. I have received quite a few calls myself, and I'm not pleased with that also. And I do also agree that we need to address that as a board, Superintendent Yost. I would like to congratulate all of our graduates. We talk about our senior graduates, and we are so proud of you and all of the graduation ceremonies that we were a part of was absolutely wonderful. But I want to also recognize our eighth-grade graduates. I attended several of those, and we had some wonderful speakers to encourage that group as well. I would also like to discuss a changing of location. It is extremely humid, and I don't know what's out there that can fit us as ceremonies, but I would like to make sure we go over that, Superintendent Yost. And then I want to also talk about all of the community people out there who are doing baccalaureate programs and other programs for our young people. I say kudos to you out there. They need to be celebrated over and over again within the community. There are several subcultures that also want to recognize their children's excellence as well as county-wide recognition, and I just want to say thank you. I went to one that the children just received all kind of gifts, you know, and that was interesting. And for those who don't know what baccalaureate programs are out there, it is to acknowledge our students' success and all that they have accomplished during their graduation time. So I want to say thank you to the community. I have attended several of those, and you could just see our students light up over and over and over again as they're recognized for their performance.
Madam Chairman, I forgot to do one more thing. I won't be here next meeting, and I can't let this go by, but I want to thank Sue Renew for all her services. I won't be here next time, Sue, but thank you from my heart and keeping us straight and giving us advice when we need it. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, we indicate that Ms. Renew is retiring, and that's what Board Member Ingersoll is referencing.
I would like to add as well that Cinderella is coming up at Port St. Lucy High School, and as you all know, that's the district-wide performance, so I encourage you, please, take your neighborhood children, your children, grandchildren, aunts, uncles, nieces, cousins, anyone you can find, and go. They have two matinee performances and several evening performances, and they rival anything you'll see on Broadway. So I encourage you to be there. Hope all of us, as board members, will get to go and share in that joy. Addressing part of what Ms. Rodriguez spoke of with the retention issue, I would like to add that, and she serves on this committee as well as I, with the chamber, and that is one of the areas that we're focusing on as well. So I look forward to the collaboration between our community partners, helping in the retention area in that respect, as well as our responsibilities as a district, as we look at the retention problem that we're surfacing as well. And my congratulations as well to all of the graduations, all of the graduates, all of the parents. There were fifth grade moving up, kindergarten moving up, eighth grade graduations, it was just any kind you, we wanted to celebrate in the last two weeks. There was a celebration happening to take part in, and I appreciate all the invitations and the ability to take part in those with all of the individual schools. And to give a special shout-out to Treasure Coast High School, they were our first-year project graduation, which was a big party, in essence, for all the graduates after the graduation ceremony, held in a safe, secure environment. And from all I understand, it was a fabulous success, so I hope principals of other high schools were able, or administrators, were able to go and see that, because it really could be a wonderful thing for each high school to take part in and build as the years go by. So thank you to Ms. Rodriguez and your team for allowing that to take place at your campus. Would you agree it was a good experience? Good. She's nodding affirmatively back there. Good. We have no unscheduled speakers before us, so we are adjourned. Good night to all of you.